Sorry about my mic, everyone. One second.
Go ahead.
Father, we thank you for another day you blessed us with. We thank you for all the blessings that we have through you. Be with this meeting tonight that we make decisions what's best for Henry County. Be with each one of the audience. And Father, we just thank you tonight as we have a document for Sylvester Humphrey, such a great leader in our community for so many years, and he will be greatly missed. Father, be with the military all over the world, give them safety and their families back home. We just ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Commission chambers in Cluston, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mental Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Daryl Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Frances Turner, County Administrator Jennifer Davis, County Attorney Mark Lapp, and interim Clerk Kimberly Barrett.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize for being late, everyone. I got hung up somewhere, wasn't trafficked, I just got hung up and couldn't get away. First thing tonight on the agenda is bids. RFQ 2020-04.
Move Option 1.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner, um, Ern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, RFQ 2020-5.
I move Option 1.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going quick. Bid 2020-07. Can instruct a service in connection with County Road 835, one mile segment improvements.
Make a motion to approve, um, the low bid of OHL USA. Right?
And B, C, and D also.
It's all part of it. Option 1.
All of option 1.
Yes, sir.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any discussion?
A quick question, just clarification, no problem with it at all, but it just said, I just didn't see a map or a specific location of it. Is there, is it just in random bad segments? Is that what it is?
No, sir. It's in between the last two segments we paid. It would be south of the track, there's a set of tracks or south of Weekly Industrial Park, from there all the way to Rogers Road and through the curve.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to ensure exactly the location of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
What about this one?
Sir?
I didn't say it.
Hold on, please, sir.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Anything pulled on this end?
Do we have anything pulled?
Shane, what about, uh, the, uh, rodeo road drive? Should we vote on that?
The one on the consent, I don't know, one hand, that's for staff reports later.
That's our staff reports.
Okay.
I hope you vote on it later today.
Well, I thought we'd vote on it now.
I hope the chairman.
He's ready, ain't he?
He's ready. Uh, so we'll get the consent agenda. We get a motion on that?
So may we.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Awards and appearances, we have several proclamations. Do we have a copy of them?
Yeah, there's one right here.
Have them right there?
One.
Here's the other one.
Okay. Kim has the originals.
Okay.
Oh, he has them?
Okay, so the first one is Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, 100 years?
Yeah.
Amazing. That's very good.
Old people.
Oh, yeah. Who said that? Oh, man.
Let's remember that come from over here. We've got a proclamation, let's see, which one am I on here?
This is the Phi Beta. Yeah, let's see right there.
Okay, proclamation, whereas the Henry County, Florida Board of County Commissioners traditionally recognizes organizations who have made significant contributions to the vitality of our county, the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc. truly represents Henry County values at their best. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority is an international community service driven organization that was founded January 16th, 1920, in Washington, DC, on the campus of Howard University, by five illustrious college women of courage and vision, Arizona Cleaver, Pearl Ann O'Neil, Myrtle Taylor, Viola Taylor, and Franny Petit. Petit? Petit? Is that right?
Petty.
Petty, okay. Whereas within the same year, Vosted Act became effective, herding the staff of prohibition, Tennessee delivered the crucial 36th ratification for the final adoption of the 19th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America, giving the women the right to vote. The worst long, uh, the worst longest economic recession to hit the US would finally, would define that end of the decade as a group Great Depression. I'm gonna add to that in a minute, but I'm gonna go ahead and read rest of the proclamation. Whereas it was written through the tumultuous environment that five legendary coeds envisioned a sorority which would directly affect post positive change, charge a course of action through 1920s and beyond, raise consciousness of their people, encourage the highest standard of scholastic achievement, and foster greater sense of union among others, membership. I promise I can read. Whereas in April 2016, the Beta Phi Zeta Epsilon Zeta chapter was chartered in Cluston, Florida, chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc. The centennial celebration will reflect the organization's commitment to promoting excellence and blaze new paths in scholastic scholarship service and finer womanhood. Whereas the sorority founder shop have ever been, forever been, huh, let me slow down. I got wound up before I got here, I'm sorry. Find the hearts and minds of its members of the journey to celebrate 100 years of service. Now therefore, Ms. Byrd, by virtue of the authority vested in her as Henry County Commissioner of Henry County, do hereby celebrate Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and urge all residents to join her together with a fellowship of commissioners in honoring its 100th anniversary glorious international centennial celebration, considered and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Florida, the 11th day of February 2020. We'll be signing that in today. So ladies, if you, um, can we get you guys to come up and let's take a picture? Uh, what I was gonna say earlier is, um, you know, as I was reading that, I'm thinking that they, the ladies have gone through a lot over the years, and y'all have been so important to many careers throughout time, no matter which time you wanna look at. So I think it's just amazing that we're getting to honor y'all tonight for what you've done in the community and what you will continue to do in the community for the ones in the past and the ones in the future coming. So if you would, come on up and let's, uh, let's do this. Can we get the middle?
No.
Okay.
I'm facing wrong, right?
I don't know, we're all facing somewhere.
All righty. Two, three. Okay.
Thank you again, ladies. Congratulations. Appreciate it very much. Should've read that one a lot bigger. Next one's for Mr. Humphries. I actually had the privilege of knowing him and working with him. What an amazing man he was. Um, I got to spend several hours and days in the library, just, just standing around talking with him. He was an amazing man. So as we do this tonight, um, you know, the community lost a great man, but he's done a lot of great things for that community and for this community as a whole. So as we honor him tonight. Whereas an individual may stand out during a lifetime due to contributions to their community and the needs of others. Whereas such an individual as Sylvester Humphrey Jr., born in Okeechobee, Florida, June 28th, 1930, passed from our midst on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, in Cluston, Florida. Whereas Sylvester Humphrey Jr., a longtime resident of Henry County, was an admired, respected member of the Harlem community. Whereas Sylvester Humphrey Jr. was an active member of the Cluston Harlem community for many years, serving on numerous organizations such as the Housing Commission, LaBelle in Henry County, the Harlem County Public Library Advisory Board, the Henry Regional Medical Center Foundation, was also serving with zeal and distinction. Whereas Sylvester Humphrey Jr. was a role model for others through his work, his leadership, his concern for others, and the peace and dignity to which his life, lived his life. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Henry County wishes to express its greatest respect for his selfless contributions to his community and Henry County. Bid proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Henry County, Florida, Sylvester Humphrey Jr. is hereby accorded this memorial of the Board's greatest respect, esteem, and appreciation for his lifetime of contribution to the citizens of Henry County. Bid further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Henry County does hereby express its sincere condolences and sympathy to the family of Sylvester Humphrey Jr. for his loss of a beloved family member, dated this day, 11th, February 2020. Again, he was an amazing man. I was, I was very privileged to get to know him and spend time with him. He was an amazing man. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
There's a whole bunch of us that are better because of him.
Absolutely.
And the legacy he leaves.
Stand up. Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say to the commission how much we appreciate this proclamation. For your, for those of you who knew Mr. Humphrey, knew how dedicated he was to, not only to that community, Carson got the wrath of his, um, his speech on Saturday at the funeral, but I think he appreciated, I hope, Carson.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and so for that, we're just grateful that you all took the time to honor him. It's not always that people get the respects that's due them. So on behalf of the family, the daughter, the wife, and our Harlem community, we really appreciate this. It's an honor.
Awesome. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Lee, Ms. Humphries, uh, one thing I wanna say is, you know, my entire life, people have told me, Carson, you don't see color. And the reality is, is I do. I just don't care. And, um, I remember having, uh, the, the opportunity to have three or four breakfast dinners with Mr. Humphries at Beefo Brady's and just sit and pick his brain. And we got there, we, you know, we, we set up that meeting to go and have a discussion about an issue. The issue discussion was 30 seconds, maybe a minute and a half.
Yes.
And then he said, okay, we're gonna push that to the side and we're gonna get to know each other. And it was just, you know, you look back on that as a young man, and those are, trying to wrap my brain around what Mr. Humphries experienced in his lifetime, where, where he started, where he ended up. And then like I aggravate you all the time, Ms. Taylor, about what his legacy will be.
Right.
To see that church filled up and the celebration of life that I witnessed, and Ms. Lee, what I, what I know you've done and stuff, I mean, just what, what a man to our community. So thank y'all for allowing us to share with him and, um, and, and, you know, it was good to see people that have been in chairs that I'm in now, their honor and respect, and it was, it was amazing. It was really amazing. Such a, such an honoring day for that man. So thank y'all.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I had the opportunity in the 70s to work with Mr. Humphrey through the school system, and then I knew him after that. I'd run into him on occasions and talk to him. He's the only man that I know that never changed. He looked the same when he was 40 and 50 as he did when he was 80. He looked the same all the time, and he always grabbed your hand and smiled like that. And, uh, he was a great guy.
That's awesome.
Okay, correspondent FYI, everybody good there? Staff reports, Ms. Davis?
Yes, sir. Um, the first item I have before you is alcohol in county facilities. At the last board meeting, Commissioner Byrd brought up under her time the, um, subject of alcohol specifically at the Harlem Civic Center. And so since then, we went through and looked at our policies and looked at the ordinance, and I'm seeking clarification tonight from you as a board, um, to make sure that I am administering your intent, I guess I should say, and, and we're looking to, um, do some tweaks on the policy and bring it forward. And once we make sure we all are on the same page or have an understanding, then we're gonna bring back those tweaks and, and have some language that's a little clearer so that it's not up for interpretation going forward. And so what I've been doing, according to the ordinance and my interpretation of the policy, is there's no alcohol in any county facilities except for Harlem Civic Center. And if it's a non-for-profit at Harlem Civic Center, then I've been approving it because it's subject to county administrator approval.
Did you say you have been?
I have been.
But that's at your discretion?
Yes. But I have not been approving private functions with alcohol. And so that's what I wanted to bring up before you tonight and get your thoughts on that, and to make sure that we're, that I'm administering your intent on that facility specifically.
That's the same for all facilities except for the one exception?
Yes, sir. Well, all the other facilities do not allow alcohol. Harlem is the only one that allows for it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, um, different people in the community have asked me to bring this to the board, because when they have parties, because they are adults and because they pay taxes, they wanna be able to have a birthday party and, and be able to have drinks. So that's why I was asking for it to bring it to the board, to have a discussion on it. Not, not somebody selling or, you know, having that type of party, but if they had a birthday party and they wanted to have a drink. So I wanted to bring it to the board to ask them to reconsider that for the community.
To reconsider allowing for private parties to be able to?
Like a birthday party, not a, not a, uh...
Non-for-profit.
Non-for-profit.
Wait, a non-for-profit can?
Non-for-profit already can.
And she's saying the community's asking her to bring it to the private, non-for-profit.
If you got a birthday party, they usually do a, what they call, be, be or whatever, bring your own bottle, that kind of thing, and they're unable to do that. So when they're unable to do that, they sneak it in, and then it puts the person that's working in a hard spot. But they want to be able to do that, and what, what was said to me is, we pay taxes here, and I would like for the board to, to bring this back to the board. So that's why I'm bringing it and opening it to the floor for discussion.
Well, I can tell you, I'm not for it, 'cause I'm not for any alcohol, but so I'm not for the party alcohol, 'cause I've seen too many bad things happen. And, uh, so the closest, I like what it says right now on the write-up, and, uh, that would be leaving it the way it is. That's what I, how I feel about it.
I guess, uh, just to weigh in on my, 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 I deal here, a birthday party is a birthday party, but it's not a birthday party where you have a covered charge at the door.
No, I'm not speaking of a covered charge, I'm just talking about a regular.
Yes, ma'am. And I know, and that's just, I'm just making sure it's clear that I, um, I, I have witnessed some of those birthday parties that wasn't really birthday parties. So we just have to be very careful, 'cause it does, the staff that's there that night is in a bad position. They've, they've told us several times, you know, I, I saw something, but I couldn't shut it down. And we, we got kind of the same thing going on in LaBelle with one of our facilities, it's under the rec board that we have to deal with. So that's, it's gonna be, that's a, that's a tough one there, so.
But normally, when you have alcohol, you're gonna have trouble.
And if you do that, can we, well, on the ones that we do that for that are non-for-profit that we do allow, I mean, we make them have law enforcement in presence, correct?
Yes. They have to prove that they're a non-for-profit with their 501(c)(3), and then there's still security that's required.
Right.
That's the same thing with the one in town.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Even with the law enforcement, they still have problems.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's...
When you have that, as many peoples we talking about is where you have trouble.
That one's an outdoor venue, it's not an indoor venue, but it's an outdoor venue, so...
Okay.
This is something, once we talk about this tonight, it's gonna be something that's gonna help us as well with what we do over there, 'cause that, ultimately, that's gonna fall under the board. It's under the rec board.
Okay.
But it's a county facility, so we got, we need to kind of be the same across the board, that way everyone's protected and it's not someone thinking, well, my opinion's this and your opinion's that. So we just need to make sure it's clear cut, like, uh, Ms. Byrd was saying. If we approve it, then we need to prove with the stipulations of, this is what it is for all, for the facility, that's, that's just it, that's the policy.
Yeah, but at the rodeo, they shouldn't be, uh, I don't think they drank if they had parties.
Uh, they do with, uh, they do with the, wedding receptions and stuff like that, and then all the dances have alcohol and stuff, too.
Well, they just have to quit.
Are they, are they not supposed to?
That, no, sir, they, they're, they're required to have security on site. Actually, the Sheriff's Department, that's pretty, it's pretty taxing on them. They've, they've had to bring in special equipment just to, that, that's a big venue, it's an outdoor venue, so it's pretty tough on them, so you could probably speak to that more than I could.
But that would be a private, non-for-profit that's there?
That's right. Well, no, it's a profit, they're, they're making a heck of a profit.
It's a profit.
Well, how, that's contrary then to...
No, that he's talking, you're talking about the rodeo grounds in LaBelle, and so...
Oh, and it falls under rec? Okay.
Right.
But, but you're, you're talking about aligning with what we do there, though.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
This is gonna help us tonight, so...
But, but Commissioner Swindle, me at one point, I guess my question is, is what, what are we trying to prevent and what are we trying to facilitate? And so, you know, like in Pioneer, I'll just tell you, in Pioneer, I'm sure that there are events that occur, I don't think they're necessarily sponsored by anybody, but there are people that roll up on the Pioneer Community Center, they, they have coolers or a cooler of adult beverages, and then they, they partake in things and then they drink. And, uh, you know, I had a constituent that called me this Sunday upset because the Pioneer Park, uh, the playground and stuff was in disarray, I guess there was broken beer bottles and stuff like that. But I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't anticipate, other than someone calling 911 or calling the Sheriff's Department, how you're gonna monitor that. Um, I would also say that, you know, what is, I, I know we don't have to do it, but what does the John Boy do? What does LaBelle Civic Center do?
Civic, they, they, uh, alcohol.
Yeah.
And LaBelle Civic Center.
LaBelle Civic Center does, you know?
John Boy does.
John Boy does as well. I think that you just have to queue up a level of security.
Yes, I know.
They, they have, um, they have two officers, depends on the amount of people.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, they block in, they rental, and if it's alcohol, it's a certain amount, if it's not alcohol, it's, it's secure, they have security. So it depends on the amount of people, and this is, they, they, they allow sales.
Yes, ma'am.
They allow you to sell at the door. We're not trying to have a sale at the door. We're trying to have an adult party, and if they chose to bring beverages, that they'll be able to have beverages at the party. Along with, we know they, we know we have to make some changes where they have to have , uh, officers and have some type of security. We don't have a problem with that, but they're an adult, and they, you know, if, if we don't do that, they sneak it in and they put other people in, in bad places.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know...
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I have to listen to, to my commissioner, um, I have to listen to my colleague who's representing on behalf of her community, and Ms. Byrd, if you're telling us that you feel that your community, uh, specifically, or anybody that wants to potentially use the Civic Center, you think that this is something that we ought to look at, I'm all about tweaking that language to make it to where the scenario that you're presenting, which is, you know, you wanna have a birthday party, and there's consenting adults in there that wanna have cocktails, and they're ready to queue up, um, you know, a, a little bit of protection, if you will, with regards to Henry County Sheriff's Department or City of Cluston Off Duty, whatever it is, but certified law enforcement that meets the standard of that protection, then let's do it. Uh, you know, um, I, I think that, I think that you could make an argument that we're open ourselves up for liability, but guess what? There's nothing that we do that isn't open for liability, you know? So, um, you know, if, if we don't wanna be liable, let's shut down the gym, let's padlock the pools, let's do everything, and let's stop everybody from having anything, because a young person could walk into the library and their femur could blow out of the side of their leg, it's probably highly unlikely, but it could occur, and we're liable for that. So, um, I, I think that we set the policy, and I, I just gotta go back to, I gotta, I gotta allow the commissioner to that area to dictate to us. And as long as you're saying we're gonna stay with, you know, a prudent approach, let's do it. Unless the Harlem community comes out up in arms and says, no, this is ludicrous and we don't want alcohol to be served, you know?
But every time you have a party, they're not gonna have security.
No, you mandate that, and if they don't, then the party gets shut down. And I think that the commissioner is telling us that that's what they're receptive to.
Because they're already doing it, so why not have the security there so that they can have it?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you right now, I've been to parties at the Civic Center, and people have been tore down, and there ain't no security. And it's been a number of years since that happened, so I, I haven't been in that element there, but, you know, the private establishments, they're having a good time. Um, this is, this is something I think that we ought to look at, because what I hear you saying is, I wanna have, I wanna have a birthday party in a facility that is cost-effective, and now my brain just automatically goes back to what I've partaken in, in the LaBelle Civic Center, or what I've seen at the Kattlemans having at the John Boy. I don't see why we shouldn't allow that to occur at, at another area. So I'm, I'm, I like the discussion.
And another layer on top of the security is, is that, you know, you can't help, but when you have alcohol, no matter who brings it, it, it's gonna add, um, uh, more cleanup. I believe even Commissioner Will said that, you know, you go in there and there's 15 bags of bottles, and so we need to make sure we account, if we go down the road, make sure that we account for, make sure the fees are adequate, because then our staff or whoever the cleaning crew is, has to go back in and clean up behind, do the hauling off, uh, and, you know, to repair if anything's broken. So I know there's a fee structure now, but if it's gonna go down that road, let's make sure that's adequate for everyone.
Great point.
That, that comment was felled, and that, it was, that's not supposed to be allowed. So again, you know, tonight, like Ms. Byrd's proposing this tonight, so if that's the case, then you, you up the increase, like you said, and if they're gonna have alcohol and felled, the same, same scenario.
Right.
I'm just saying if we keep it the same across the board, that way no one can, you know, well, you, you know, you don't like this one, you like that one. So as long as we get it all lined out, 'cause felled is the same way, the community says we don't want alcohol. But then, you know, they have the parties, the private parties that do the alcohol, they have alcohol. I mean...
Then, then, since, since they say there's no, then there's not a deputy there, and we don't charge them extra cleanup or anything?
Right, and then, and the reality is...
They're doing it anyway.
They do it anyway.
And the cost of cleanup, the cost of renting the building doesn't cover the cleanup.
That's right.
By the time we send a person down to clean the building, clean the floors, take off the garbage, it doesn't even, it doesn't even cover that, much less the light bill or anything else.
That needs to be addressed.
And I, and I think, Mr. Chair, I think that we're, we're willing to, to address all that, because for me personally, I'm, I've not looked at this in quite some time. I don't even remember, I don't even remember the year it was that we had this discussion, but I remember it was a very verbose discussion when we did it occur. And I think that, you know, I didn't drill in on, is it 150 bucks to rent the Civic Center, or is it $1,500 to rent the Civic Center? And then does renting it, uh, also afford you the opportunity to have a $500 deposit that they do all clean up and they perform everything? Does somebody come in with a white glove, or do they come in with a little bit of a look, you know, and, and how does that work? And we, we need to, we need to, but for me, I don't necessarily wanna hash that out right now. I'd like to put that on the county administrator, let her bring a plan back to us, show us comparable numbers, you know? I, I do remember, uh, us looking at what the City of Cluston charged and what LaBelle Civic Center charged, and we kind of put ourselves, we were a little bit under them, but, but within line. So, um, I, I, I think it's a good chat to have, so, um, I, I'm, I'm all about it, Ms. Byrd. I, I guess that's what I'm saying is I support, uh, you wanting to, to move this conversation down the road, so to speak. I, I think that, uh, you, you've brought a couple of good ideas. The golf carts being one of them, I think we've done it. I think it's been a success, you know? I need something easy. I got to listen to what the community wants.
Exactly, and I, I agree.
I was trying for the life of me, last night I was at the Cougar discussion. I was trying for the life of me to remember what was the catalyst that brought this up. And so I'm glad you clarified that it was you that brought this up at the last meeting because I couldn't remember why we were discussing it. I just remember that we had the discussion years before. And so we're good, I'm good with it. Do we need, do we need a motion?
Need a vote on this, Mr. Martin?
Mr. Chair, or?
I, I was just looking for direction so we could bring it back to you with the appropriate language.
Okay.
I think we've given that. Do you all disagree?
Nope.
No.
Can I ask a question now?
Ms. Chair, you better shut her down because if you start letting her go, well, I'm telling you now, she's going to rush out of the store.
In reading Jennifer's thing of, the thing it said that you were thinking about, an increase of, can, I'm trying to figure what's the purpose for the increase? Are we not charging enough? Because when they rent the building, they've got to get insurance. So insurance will cover any damages that occur or any incidents that occur.
So right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Right now, the deposit's $200, for example.
You want to increase that?
And so if they were considering to allow alcohol, I was just saying that you should consider potentially increasing some of the fees, maybe the deposit. Um, and, and that was just a point of general.
Cleaning.
Discussion to look at the fee structure if you are looking to allow it going forward.
And you're going to bring that back?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just, just one little specific question to that as well. What happens if the, what happens if the Hendry County Fair and Livestock Show, uh, or 4H or Cluiston Cougars like they did last night? They want to, they want to utilize the Harlem Civic Center. Is there a cost for them to use that? Is that, is, does a non-for-profit that is bringing something to the community, they have to pay?
For a community, for a community event, if you will, they wouldn't pay, they wouldn't pay a per hour charge and depending on what it was. So if it was a, like a community meeting or whatever.
Let me give you an instance. Last night, the Cougars had a general discussion with the community to, to talk about leaving the Peace River Pop Warner Football Conference and embracing the mid-Florida, uh, football league.
Okay, so we, we, we did not charge any fees for that.
Okay, we did not.
And that's at your discretion, Ms. Davis, right?
Well, that's in the policy.
Okay.
That's in the policy.
All right.
Okay.
And I'm still good with that being at the discretion of the county administrator because I don't think we're going to, I mean, the community's not so massive that you don't know enough. And I don't think we're going to play favorites with that. You're going to do the right thing.
And there's sometimes that there's questions and we're not sure.
Yeah.
But as we talk it out and we figure out what it is and it, okay, it's indeed a community event, then it's a community event.
Yeah, but let me tell you right now, Killer tries to throw a 501(c)(3) bound sugar party at $5 a pop for everybody to walk in, he needs to be charged something.
Okay, because the event last night was definitely a community event by a nonprofit. So if I'm understanding you right, nonprofits can have community informational events like last night without a fee. Okay, because we were going to get charged at $200. So I do appreciate you all waiving those fees.
But we waived it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, Carson. Y'all were talking about raising.
Before you start, state your name, sir.
My name, my name, James Wheeler. I'm a citizen, I'm a, I'm resident Harlem community. And y'all were talking about raising the prices for the Civic Center, about the cleanup and then, about the cleanup afterwards and everything. Well, I'm one of the guys, we have a party or venue, whatever y'all want to say at the Civic Center. Me and a couple of young men. But we make sure when we leave, we clean that place up. Next day we come in, we sweep through it again. So there's nothing left. There's no trash. We pick from the outside up, clean from the head to bottom. You ask me Jeanette. But we don't, I, I, I don't have parties for personal gain. Me and my friends have parties. Some of that money goes to, we pull our grills out on the park, give away hot dogs and hamburgers for kids. You ask me Jeanette and her daughter, she's not here. I do a thing for 4th of July every other year. I haven't did it in a couple of years because I wasn't able to get to Civic Center. And then money goes toward me running around on Christmas Day, pulling a trailer behind me, giving unfortunate kids bicycles. So I don't do it as a personal gain. I do it as, as me looking out for my community and unfortunate kids. So it's not always going in my pocket, uh, our pockets. We're not, we're not lining our pockets with this money. You know, and we, if we have a party, we also have a nonprofit organization, you know? So I don't see what would be the, the problem, as long as we're paying for it. And yes, we do have security. We have, we get the, um, Hendry County Sheriff's Department and also how outsource, um, security, um, people that, um, come on as well. So make sure they're walking around, there's no smoking in the building, no one's getting loud and rowdy. And if anybody knew I ever held a party, there have never been an argument or a back turn or a fight there. I mean, it's, it's, it's just good vibes, that, that's it.
Well, the, the, the fees you're talking about, both, both of you, you asked about why we're increasing the fees. We're just trying to align our buildings with what they should be making. The reality is, we don't want it to be a boat. We're sets in the yard and we throw money away every year in it. And you, you probably clean it perfectly, but not everyone does. I've been there, I used to inspect that building. For 18 years I was in that department and it was times I would go in, the floors were just terrible. Stuff hanging from the ceilings. So there, there's a few, there's a few that, you know, that don't, don't clean it, sir. So what we're trying to say is, we got to make sure that when it doesn't, we have the funds that's going to take care of our buildings. That way you, you continue to use them. The things you're doing, that's amazing. Give them back to the community. Just that's not always the case. Like some of the other buildings we have, like Felder, folks rent that from a different county. They'll have their cousin rent it. So what I'm saying, this is all going to, this is going to take care of all of our buildings at once. We're not just drilling down on Harlem. This, as I said earlier, you heard me say at the very beginning, this is going to help our policy with all of our buildings. Because right now, I think Felder's $100.
A hundred dollars, no, they're all the same. $300 for a six-hour block of time if they're a Hendry resident.
What's the deposit?
Uh, $200 for a regular deposit or a hundred for a repass.
Okay, so now, but same scenario. There's some good actors there, there's some bad actors there.
There, there is, but.
Board, so it has to be, now you go in, you clean it, you get your deposit back. So as long as you're cleaning it, that deposit comes back in your pocket anyway.
Well, last couple of times I've been in a discrepancy also because we, um, and the reason why we stopped trying, I stopped trying to get the Civic Center, me and a couple more of us, because in the contract it says we're not allowed to have any rap groups. But we're talking about Harlem community, but you're going out to some Latinos that have a full concert there with a, a full Mexican band.
Does it really say you can't have rap groups?
Uh, yeah, look in it. Yeah, it's in there.
Does it really say you can't have rap groups?
It does say because before I got in the street.
Well, so if, if you can't have rap group there, but you can have a full Mexican band there? Is that not discrimination?
Yeah, it's discrimination. It's 100% discrimination.
But it's been in, I don't know.
And it's asinine if it says you can't have rap groups.
It's, it's been in there when I first.
I don't either. I have some rap singers in the church. If you came to an area, come on over and visit me and I'll let them sing to you on Sunday morning.
So, Mr. Chair.
I've never heard anything like that, that's kind of odd, sir.
I think that's the old one.
I would hope so.
But that's, that's the one I read. I read that in the, um.
That's embarrassing.
I remember seeing that.
It's in, it's in there because I read it.
I remember seeing that in any document at a point. But this one I'm holding right now is the 2017 version that the board approved by resolution. And this is the latest and greatest, the board approved one.
Does it say anything about that?
And I'm not seeing it, I'm looking.
Yeah, we just.
So that, that's a thing of the past then.
That's embarrassing.
I'm not seeing it.
Y'all did it, I wouldn't hear then.
I wouldn't have. Chairman Willis was one of those ones who was in there cleaning math. It seems like rap music, why I wouldn't have had it this dirty.
I love all music, I don't have a problem with music. It ain't the music.
Because 2017, if you all should have been in, in, uh, office in 2017 is 2000.
That's what they're saying though, it ain't in there now.
Yeah, they had it, yeah.
He's, he's reading it right now.
You made a statement that you had a problem getting the Civic Center and you had a, not you, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Um, and you say you had a 501. You say you had a, a nonprofit.
Yes, ma'am. And it was something about it too, it was where it took the flyer.
Yeah, come on up, man.
Um, it was, it was a bunch of mess. It was just, it was all kind of red tape, first of all. If they, they tell me do this, I do this, it come out with something else. Then I had a problem with a flyer, being a flyer of a birthday party with a bottle with sparklers on it. Had to take it down in one year with somebody, had, had, uh, had a girl on it with a bikini on. She wasn't, she wasn't naked, you see people in bikinis all the time. So I had to take that down. It's just all kind of red tape. It's just all the different kind of chapters you got to go through to get to Civic Center.
And you don't play country music?
Yeah, I listen to country music, actually I do.
No, no, they say it's rap. I ain't playing country music there. No, I'm just kidding because, no rap.
If, if some, some, if, lot of things, like what you're saying, I, I didn't, I never heard of that. So sometime when you get to the, to that place and if you don't address somebody else over that person, then we don't always get it because we don't micromanage, so we don't know. But I do know once flyers go out, the Sheriff's Department, if somebody sends the Sheriff's Department a flyer and it's supposed to be just a regular party, it changes. It changes the dynamic of what they're going to charge you. Am I right? Um, Ms. Margaret, am I right?
The application says one thing and then the flyers come out and are contrary, then.
If it's an advertised, uh, event.
Right.
Um, and.
For the public.
Right, and sometimes they have, uh, certain things on the flyers that indicate that there's, you know, different, uh, that it's a different type of event. And, um, so those, those are some of the things that have caused concern for both the Sheriff's Department and our department.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm happy that we're going to be reviewing this. Um, you know, if we're, if we're going to go down the path of allowing alcohol in the Civic Center, um, I do think that we need to look at what, how aligned our deposits are, uh, what that cleanup process is, how the check-in and checkout process unfolds. But, um, I mean, there comes a point where, you know, if, if we're going to act like we're an adult society, we got to let people behave like adults and, you know, um, I'm, I'm thoroughly embarrassed that we had a document. I wish I could have seen that.
I still got a copy. I got, I got a copy. I got a copy of it. I meant, I was intending to bring it, but I forgot it.
I feel very confident, uh, Killer, that, that our county attorney has, has reviewed that enough right here that that's not in there right now. And so I at least feel good about that. But, uh, but I mean, that's, that's a testament to a number of things. So we, uh, we, we need to, we need to visit it. Uh, Ms. Bird, I appreciate you bringing it up. And, um, I, I think that we've given enough direction on this to.
Yeah, we can move forward with it now. Did you want to make a statement, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Come on up.
My name is Yolanda Ford. I'm on the chair for Brown Sugar. And it's in reference to the pageant. Every year the Brown Sugar Pageant has been pushed around from John Boy back to the Cluiston High School. Now we're, have nowhere to even have the pageant. We have no venue for the pageant. The pageant has been pushed to March the 30th, a Thursday. Kids got to go to school, people got to work. We have no venue. There's no curtains in the Civic Center to even open the curtains to give the girls, give the guys the, the idea of being in a pageant.
Is it because it was booked? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you said you were pushed around and it was because it was booked and you couldn't get in?
Yeah, because every year the pageant is being held the last Saturday of April and it's always been that. Now they're being scheduled with weddings, they're being scheduled with everything. But everybody in that building know that Brown Sugar always had that last Saturday or that first Monday.
Okay.
To do something. Now we don't even have a date on the calendar, it's been for the last three years.
What about Cluiston High School?
What about it?
Do they have an auditorium?
Yes, they do.
Do they have curtains?
Yes, they do.
Why can't you use that? They use, that's what we do in LaBelle.
We don't want to use that. We've been using the Civic Center, we used that before. But the venue is not appropriate for the pageant setting.
Did you not book the, um, Civic Center?
Yes, it's booked for a Thursday.
I mean, did you book it prior for the?
And last year we couldn't even have one because we didn't have enough participation to even put one on. We didn't have enough girls. So that's why we didn't have one last year.
As far as the curtains go, uh, they've been down for years, but we are working on the curtains. We have a bid.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but, um, we do have a bid for the curtains and we are working on the curtains.
And then the venue, y'all want us to use the Civic Center? And if y'all are going to up the charges, at least make it look decent. The cabinets draws in there, I don't know if y'all ever been out there. It's filthy with rat species, the toilets overcrowd. If too many people use it in the female bathroom, they overflow by the middle of your event. It's just nasty. So if y'all are going to decide on the board to up the charge, at least make it look decent. So when we go in there, it's worth our money.
Mr. Chair, I would just say to that, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the volume of people that are in and out on an event. And those are all things, you know, I don't, I don't know what that building was designed to hold through. I don't have a clue, to be honest with you.
I think it's 250. 250 is the capacity for it.
That seems heavy for there, but, but, um.
And that's without chairs or tables.
And, and then, and then to the, to the, uh, pageant issue, I, I still, in my understanding, the Civic Center is available for that date?
Yeah, but there's no curtains.
Okay. And, but curtains have been ordered.
They're, they're, she just got the, uh.
We're seeking bids right now.
Okay. She just got the bids for the curtains.
And we're in the month of February. And that'll be, you know, okay, all right, that'll be tough, but, okay.
That's never going to happen. Not in time enough to have a pageant.
Can't have it in March?
When? When's your ideal time? When's the ideal time you want to have it? I'm sorry.
It's always the last Saturday in May.
You want to have it last Saturday in May?
Thank you.
Shouldn't we can get a, shouldn't we can get a curtain door and put up by the last, by then, couldn't we?
She already took the bid.
I would think so.
She already sent the bid out.
We've already had someone out there and gave, gave us a bid, but we got to get two more. And so we're working on getting the other two bids to be able to move forward.
But it is scheduled for the John Boy on, um, April the 30th on a Thursday night.
Mr. Chair, this is one thing. I mean, have you, have you talked to Ms. Bird privately about this issue at all prior to tonight?
No, Ms. Bird attended our meeting, when, it was last Tuesday.
But I knew about the curtains.
And she knew about it.
And Jennifer, um, I think Ms., um, Ms. Hall talked to me last year and, and, um, not Jennifer. Tracy have been seeking bids for the curtains. We had to get somebody out of Tampa to come out just to look at it.
The curtains been gone over a year.
I.
I don't think it's been an issue to anyone else to get it fixed.
This ties right into a section on, on, on business by district time that I want to bring up tonight. We, we, we've, we just got to get a handle on a few things as a board. And, you know, we, we have, we have a number of these little day-to-day items that hit us. And I think that we don't, you know, I, I've brought up, I don't know how many times now, the intersection improvements that we're trying to get, you know? And I think we need to move to an old business section or a new business section and just have a list that just lives, you know, living document, so.
We've, some black people don't mind playing for things as long as it's nice. We like nice things too. We're not going to pay all this money to be surrounded in filth.
I'm sorry, did you say some black people?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we got some nasty black people, but we also got some that like nice things too. And we know how to take care of buildings and venues.
I, I, I will just tell you right now, I, I don't, I find it irrelevant whether it's a black or a white or a brown folk. I, I just think that we need to try to offer up as nice of a facility as we can.
Yeah, but everybody talking about going up on the charges, nobody's talking about the upkeeping
I think that.
Of the building.
I think that, um, we, we operate everything on the razor thin of margins. And, uh, I would be lying if I said I knew the exact status of the Harlem Civic Center. I would be lying if I said I knew the exact status of the Harlem Civic Center, but, um, you know...
One day y'all need to just take your suit and tie off and just take y'all to walk out there and look in there.
I was out there last night, so...
Open the drawers up in the kitchen.
I haven't been there in about three years, but prior to that, I was there for about every day for eighteen years. I, I was, and, and, all of our, all of our bills need attention, they do, it's not just Harlem, all of them need attention, and that's, that's, you know, as Commissioner Turner said, I don't visit the buildings regularly like I used to, I used to be in our buildings regularly, and I haven't been, um, but that, again, that's where staff comes in, and that's, you know, we, we don't micromanage, but, we, and like you said, Commissioner, once we get on top of it, we do, we need to get on top of it. I can tell you that any time I wanna do something for someone, I wanna make sure if I was, just like I was doing it for myself, and that's the way, that's the way we're gonna, we're gonna address this, so we'll, we'll get it corrected.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have direction on that, we can move forward.
Thank you.
Uh, next?
Next item I have before you is a library update and resolution request. Um, as you know, we met with the Glades County Commission with a joint meeting sometime back, and they requested, um, the opportunity to potentially join our library cooperative, or to create a new library cooperative. So we've been working, um, the city manager, um, and I, and Clueston, uh, the Okeechobee County Administrator, and the Glades County Administrator, we've been working and trying to come up with a way to, to accomplish this. Uh, there's a requirement that we would all have to give notice by April first to withdraw from our current cooperatives in order to create a new cooperative, and so that would not be effective, however, until October first of, of, of this year. And so, um, it was requested by the Glades County, one of the Glades County Commissioners, that we, um, enter into some kind of, uh, resolution of intent, that, that we are intending to work with them on this, um, cooperative. The City of Clueston, uh, Board serves as our current library cooperative Board, and so, uh, Mr. Martin is bringing that before the City of Clueston Board to agree to do that. Okeechobee has already made a motion to withdraw from their current Board, and she was going, I think they have a meeting tonight as well, um, I had a copy of her report, um, that she was giving to her Board, and requesting the same thing that I'm requesting tonight, um, for everyone to be in agreement, and then everyone felt that with those resolutions of intent that we would bring back to the next meeting, that everybody would have a, a, a sense of, um, cooperation and feel good about giving those April first deadline, uh, notices to withdraw, and then from April to October, we would have time to, um, work out the details, we have to come up with a new MOU, um, a li- library cooperative agreement, uh, decide how we're gonna structure the new Board, to make sure that everybody has proper representation, and to be able to move forward in that, in that direction.
I know, I talked to LaBelle, and they're on Board, they, they excited about doing it.
This will, this will afford us a little over three hundred thousand dollars a year more in funding for the library, and also there is a March, um, deadline for a startup grant for a new cooperative that we would, we want to be able to apply for.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Davis, you say three hundred K more, was that split amongst all, or just, just, or...
For, for the cooperative as a whole.
Okay, and how many libraries total would that be?
It would be, we have three, in Hendry, Glades, and Okeechobee.
Okay.
Three hundred more than we're receiving today.
So our budget would stay the same, plus three hundred K?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Plus whatever it...
Divided. And essentially, we only add two more libraries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The, Ms. Davis, the, um, if, if we do the resolution of intent, um, would that, that would not lock us into having to do that if we...
Yeah, like, yeah.
Got down that path and found apprehension?
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, Mark can answer that, I, I think they were wanting it more as a, a, a gesture of, of faith, of, of cooperation going forward, and good faith that we would all work towards that goal to make it happen, I mean, I don't think it would...
But you do have an out clause.
Well, we will, we'll bring that back to you.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I mean, to echo to what you're kind of insinuating, I think, so I won't say anything what you're saying, I gotta have an out clause right now, because if we're just gonna move forward with a MOU of intent to start the new library cooperative, and the only, the only, you know, the only comment I have right now is you tell me that the LaBelle Library's on fire about it, but I have no idea what the Harlem community thinks about, you know, turning over some control to the Florida Thomas Library, or what the City of Clueston, I don't know, and so I don't want, I don't want it to come across as, we're moving down this path, and we've taken none of their considerations, and I'm gonna tell you, at that Glades County meeting, I detected a lot of apprehension.
A lot.
You know, they were, there was a lot of question, comments, and concerns, and people wanting to grab my arm and talk to me about it afterwards, and, and I, and I've asked for some information, I've gotten nothing back, so, you know, I'd, I'd love to know where everybody stands on it.
Have you talked to Clueston?
Yeah, so, so Mr. Martin is in charge of the librarian for Clueston, and they are also the, um, cooperative coordinator for all three of our libraries.
Oh, okay.
And so, um, and so there's a lot of, to your point, without getting into it tonight, there's a lot of details from a structural perspective that have to be worked out, that everybody gets comfortable with, in order to, um, make this thing successful, and so that would all, you know, that's gonna take a little bit of time to work out, um, but I would definitely say there would be some type of out...
So you're gonna bring it back to us, you have a deadline?
Um, not necessarily, but we would probably bring it back to the next meeting.
Ms. Davis, not to put you on the spot, but the question I wanna know is, you, you just said to his, to answer, uh, to his question, Randy, what I wanna know is, have you talked to that library group, have you met with those members, and have you listened to their con- concerns?
When you say library group?
The, the, the City of Clueston, uh, huge.
Battery Board.
I've, I haven't talked to their Board, I've talked to Natasha Hayes, I've, I've had a conversation with...
Is that their director?
To their director, with, um, and so...
She feels better now?
I think so.
Okay.
Um, after, there was a meeting with the librarians, and they were discussing it, and, uh, to Commissioner Harris's point, um, LaBelle's on Board, I think everybody's on Board, but there was a little bit of, um, maybe you, you mentioned some apprehension and some different things, so when, when we were made aware of that, when I say we, Randy and I were made aware of that, we, we thought it would be best if the county administrators and the city managers accordingly kinda took the reins of the discussion and led the charge, and so that's, that's what we've done, and that was, this is what has come out of that conversation.
Mr. Chair?
When we was in Glades, it was too good to be true.
Yeah.
When that lady got up and talked.
So, so that, so we're, we're kinda pulling it back to, to our level of discussion, and, and trying to, um, go forward that way.
One, one of the questions that was asked, who would distribute the funds, um, who will get a percentage of the funds, and they couldn't answer that, they, they didn't have an answer for that, so if they're gonna take control, who's gonna distribute?
Well, when you say they, that, those are the things that we have to work out from a structural perspective, um, right now, the City of Clu- and so the City of Clueston has to agree to this, and if they don't, you know, we're, we're...
Right.
And so everybody's got to be in agreement, because the, the entire Board would be restructured. Right now, the Board is the City of Clueston Commissioners, so moving forward with two other counties participating, that would, that would look very different, it would, it would have some of our members on there, Okeechobee, Glades, Clueston, everybody, we, we have to agree on how that representation...
And understand, one of the specific things that they brought up was that they couldn't get any more money unless we joined in, so are they, are we in there because they need us, or are we in there because they wanna help us?
No, they need us.
They couldn't get any more money without us joining them.
That's true.
They, they, because they was already at their limit, they had to have, uh, so many other counties to step in in order for them to get more money.
I understood an aspect of that as well, yes, ma'am.
Well, if it's like everything else, we do, all the funding for this library to go to whichever ones in Commissioner Harris's district.
Yeah.
Sure of that.
Glad you understand.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we know.
We get more sidewalks.
Yeah. Do we need a motion?
We need direction on that, you already have direction now.
We'll bring it, we'll just bring it back.
Okay.
The next item I have before you is just an FYI, um, with a BMAP update, there's nothing in your packet regarding the saying, but the final BMAPs for the expansion for Kalusa Hapchi and Lake Okeechobee were finalized, um, and so there's, um, you know, there's a lot to that, and, um, we will be bringing back before you at a later date, um, when we have a better understanding of what that means as far as our obligation. Um, as you all know, we were awarded the Four Corners, uh, money, uh, what, two weeks ago, um, at four point two million dollars, and so that is a water quality project, and so there is going to be a load, if you will, associated with that, and so, um, we're gonna be working to get our, our, our arms around what our allocation is, how much of that project specifically will allow us to, to meet that obligation, and then a plan going forward of, of what that might look like.
So, a couple of questions, on the, I don't know if Shane does, but anyway, like on the Four Corners?
Yes, you owe me lunch.
All right, no, hell, I'm nothing.
No, it's, it's on the record, like, twelve times, you said we weren't gonna get anything.
Well, just...
We got all of it.
We just listened.
Okay, I'm ready.
You gonna give it back so I don't have to buy it?
Okay, most, is most of the work gonna be done in Lee County, and we got the grant? How does that work? 'Cause, is, they, they're gonna drain Lehigh and Fort Myers and all that area through the Four Corners to get down?
You gotta make a negative.
No, sir, your hydraulics are wrong, we're not draining Lehigh, Lehigh, Lehigh's on the other side of the river.
What?
Lehigh's on the other side of the river. We're gonna be improving the three hundred and something feet the Board owns within Hendry County, half the canal bank, the county line goes through the center of County Line Ditch, the backside of, the west side of County Line Ditch, we have a drain adjustment from County Line Drainage District, we're not really planning any improvements there.
So you're not going in Lee?
No, sir, we're in Hendry.
So, just Hendry County.
Just Hendry County.
I remember when five thousand dollars, that's gonna be a big project, thirty-five years ago.
That should help Scott and Wendy.
I couldn't get it done then either, could you?
That should help Scott and Wendy.
Joe Spritz project.
Lot of flooding out there, so...
Okay, we appreciate that, Shane.
Get that lunch. Ford, Ford real good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the final item I have before you is Avail Benefits, at the last Board meeting, we brought before you, um, options to, um, potentially enter into a contract with a consulting firm, Avail Benefits, um, you all had some questions and concerns. Since then, uh, we had a meeting yesterday with the Constitu- yes, yesterday with the Constitutionals, um, and Avail, and, um, some of you have also met with them independently, um, and asked some questions that you might have, uh, before you tonight, again, um, is for your consideration, uh, to move forward, or for direction, and, and how you feel, um, with the proposal.
Did everybody meet, get to meet with them?
I, I was not able to.
I believe you, myself, and Ms. Byrd did.
Okay. Did you get to meet with them, of course?
I, I did not meet with them, but I kinda understand the details to it emphatically.
Well, nobody's speaking, I had several calls from some of the Constitutions, and, um, they was not in agreement, they felt that we should do something in-house before we go outside, they felt that we need to come up with a different plan, um, and they felt like the, it was too much money, so then was the phone calls that I got today.
Yeah, I got, I had two against, one on defense, and one yes, from the Constitutions, and, uh, uh, but we'll never know if we can save any money unless you spend money. And, 'cause e- each year, insurance continues to climb, and I, as of now, Jennifer, when, when they just call you and tell you eleven percent, nothing you can do about it, correct? You just say, okay, or...
Well, those are...
Rebid, or what?
Well, they give us our, right now with PRM, um, we get our renewals in June, and, and, and it is what it is, to your point, um, as far as, when you get to that point, it is what it is, and so, um, you know, something, what we've been talking about is trying to be more proactive with a large expense that we have, and so I, I do agree and think that we should be doing something more than what we're doing to be proactive in trying to keep the costs down, and so, you know, but all that has to happen long before you get to your renewal...
Right.
Your renewal, because once you're there, it is what it is at that point, and all the work has to be done.
Well, the conversations I have with the same things, uh, you know, as concerned as the cost, I mean, you're almost a quarter of a million dollars in three years, we're not gonna see nowhere near that in ten years.
Wait, wait, we're not gonna see nowhere near what?
Quarter of a million dollars?
In ten years?
You gonna see that kinda return in three years?
Absolutely, you can.
You hope, you...
We had a four thousand dollar increase last year.
We're not gonna see anything in the first year, for sure, second year, we'll see a little bit, third year...
Third year, you should see a lot.
A lot, how much is a lot to you?
I don't have, it'd have to be more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There you go, well, that's the biggest concern is, what they're all, what everyone's concerned was, is the amount, number one, the amount, number two, was we just had the one option, that was it, you can go with them, or you don't get no other options, and we require, uh, three bids on everything, if we put a door in, we require three bids on it, I can tell you how frustrating that is, 'cause I had to get three bids before, people would tell me all the time, I'm tired of bidding, 'cause I'm not gonna get it, but we don't have two more bids to, to equate this to, all we have is the one bid, and if this is a sole source, then it's one bid, if it's not a sole source, then have we, have we approached PRM and said, hey, do you have this program, do you provide this, if so, what, what would the amount cost to be to do that, we, we have them on, we got them queued up now, the increase is gonna be there, I agree with it, as far as doing something, 'cause if you don't do something, expect something different, that, that's your definition for that, that none of us wanna be.
Yeah.
But the fact is, this is a lot of money, that's eighty-two thousand dollars a year, so that's, that's the hardest pill for everyone to swallow, is have we even, even looked anywhere else other than this, that's, that's the biggest thing I've got, so...
Does anybody else do this?
Yes, sir.
Jennifer?
There are, there are other firms...
That does the same thing?
That, it, so, to answer that question, if that's something you wanted to do, then that would be an RFP or an RFQ, that you would go out and you would seek other folks to give you what they do, and, and then you would compare them, and you would request the scope, and, and they would respond accordingly.
But the people in this business, they, they don't call you and try to get on the agenda like these people?
And, and there is a component, if you will, with, with PRM, but it is not, I would say it is not as aggressive as what, what, um, their services would provide.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And, and I think that, I think we're all kind of, uh, singing the same tune from the same sheet of music, but I would like to kinda bring it in, and, and let's see if we can start, eh, moving in a direction that's gonna be beneficial to the county and to everyone involved. I'm glad we're having this discussion, I'm glad that, you know, we're thinking proactively about health and doing something for our, our, our employees and their families, and, and hopefully it'll be something that can work its way outward in the community, at least if nothing else, as a model of what, you know, a, an organization can do. Um, h- having said that, you know, um, I'm, at least I feel like I'm fresh off the sting of not, you know, adequately bidding out our insurance, the way that we should have to start with, and again, we operate, you know, the fiduciary responsibility of our constituents' money, Avail has been a great company, I think they got a great product, I would love to see them work with us, but I don't feel comfortable not putting this out to an RFP, so that we can competitively bid it, so that we have the comfort and peace of mind in saying this is the best product, or this is not, now we have a better product with a better initiative and a way to make that happen, so the only way to do that, and for us to be able to look our citizens in the eye, that we are good custodians of their money, is to do an RFP, and I'd be willing to put that in the form of a motion if y'all agree.
The only thing I wanna add to that, and, and this is one thing, let's, let's say we go out to three bids, and we get, we get the three bids come in, the only thing that... If they have a better product, I think that's what we should, we can move into.
And, and I think we have the latitude to do that.
We always get stuck with that lowest bidder thing, and it drives me crazy.
I don't think so.
So, I'd just like to make sure that, if, if, let's say that, if they come in, Avail's at eighty-two thousand, if the next guy comes in at fifty, are we sure we're not...
Well, I think we have the latitude to do that, though, can we clarify that?
Okay, I just wanna make sure we are doing the, the right thing, 'cause...
Right.
I mean, a lot of times, we've cut the nose off to spite the face, and it, it hurts.
You can do an, you, you can do, you can do an RFP where you have multiple, um, benchmarks or measures, you know, price is one, you know, the product is another, I'm not even sure what the different aspects of the product would be, but your points, so you'd have a ranking committee that would rank and evaluate them based upon the different criteria, and price would be one, but these other factors would be other components, and they'd get a score on each, and then a grand total, and then you'd make your determination on that.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with that, that, that way, you know, we're doing, we're doing exactly what we require everyone else to do, I agree with that, we definitely need to move forward, this is, and I'm, I'm really glad this is brought to us, 'cause we wouldn't be standing here next year having the same conversation if it wasn't, but I do believe this, we do need to do it that way, I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Swindell on that.
Um, therefore, I move to put that, um, I put it in the form of a motion that we go to an RFP.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Swindell, second by Commissioner Harris, any further discussion on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I think that, um, anytime a, a company is, is putting energy into, uh, giving you a portfolio of what they're gonna produce, you know, there's a cost associated with that, um, I think we all are, are able to realize that, um, I think, I've been in this seat for a long time now, and we've been talking about this, and it sounds like we're getting ready to get ourselves set up to hear, uh, some really, you know, great speeches from PRM, and what they're gonna do for us, and how awesome the services that they provide for us, and I just wanna warn this Board that we need to have an ally, somebody that's working on our behalf, to beat down the different processes associated with running our cost of existence up, the day-to-day overhead, and I think that we're dangerously close to moving away from, uh, looking, uh, inviting for somebody to come and want, and want to compete for our book of business, and, uh, there comes a time when people are gonna say, you know what, y'all just, y'all, unfortunately, you don't really know what you want, and so, you know, I don't know if this is gonna be a marriage that matches up, and I, and I, I think we're treading down that path pretty aggressively, um, I, you know, I, I think that we have the opportunity to sign up a good product here, uh, they have, they have case history that, that we see with, uh, Taylor and Hardy, uh, Taylor matches up not as well with us, uh, but Hardy matches up pretty dang good demographically, and, um, you know, obviously, I'm gonna be on the, the losing end of this vote, but, um, you know, I just, I think that we need to quit talking about it, we're already into the second quarter of this fiscal, um, you know, I thought that we had a pretty good conversation with our Constitutionals months ago, months ago, and they said, we're gonna, we're gonna stand lockstep with you, um, the only way I can, the only way I can support moving forward with this is, I, I want a commitment from this Board tonight, that we're, we're gonna lock into whatever, whatever this average shows us for, uh, medical cost increases, and we've got to, we've got to ask our Constitutionals to put some skin in the game, because right now, we're footing the bill, and, and we're footing the bill in its entirety, and it's just not fair, it's not fair to us to find those dollars and cents, and, and we have the lion's share of the employees that are creating this cost, but, but we're being dictated to, in my opinion, uh, and we're, and we're, we're also rec- you know, we're, y'all are saying we need to do that, and I get it, um, I think, you know, I think we need to put something in there that says, if it's a million dollar increase, or if it's a hundred thousand dollar increase, whatever, whatever the percent increase is from what it was last year, we're gonna give a flat rate, what our, what our annual increase is, we're gonna contribute to our percentage, and look at that, because if, if your employees in my company, if my employees never feel the effects of, of what they're having to do on a daily basis, and I'm just able to provide and provide and provide and absorb that cost, I'm not able to do as much for that employee base, and, and I think that we do a lot for our employees, and I think that, um, and I think that we need, we need to make sure that all of us are on, are, are shooting from the same, uh, you know, uh, line there, so that's my two cents.
Well, the only thing I was told, and I was told this today, was that actually Taylor is a different animal, same size, but a different animal to what we're dealing with, am I correct in saying that, or should we say today, sir?
Every county, every...
Every county's different, right, the demographics may be the same, but everything's different, so...
Twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Considerably smaller.
Trees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Go, Shane.
Not a sale.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I have before you a, you had in your handout a, I'm sorry, in your packet, you had a placeholder for LaBelle Airport Florida Power and Light Utility Easement, and I did a handout prior to the Board meeting, and I'm seeking approval of an FPNL easement between Hendry County and FPNL...
No move.
For relocated power line.
Second motion.
Keep in mind, there's two easement forms that I'm asking the Chairman to sign, it depends on which one FPNL will accept, County Attorney wanted some changes, I don't know I don't know if FPNL will be willing to make those changes to their standard form agreement. Just keep that in mind.
Mr. Harris has been wanting to vote on this all night, so.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindell. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, I have one more item, a walk-on item. This is one I emailed out yesterday regarding a supplemental funding agreement from DOT for LaBelle Airport rodeo drive in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Bird.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I gave you a review of the law on the various kinds of vehicles that are out there, and the restrictions and the allowances for each of them. One part of my write-up is an assumption, and I really like clarification from those of you who know about these vehicles more than I do. The, you know, there's ATVs, and those are defined, and there are certain sizes, you know, widths and weight. And then, if it's over that, then it's another kind of vehicle called a recreational off-highway vehicle, ROV, and that's certain width and height, weight. And just on an online search, these side-by-sides appear to be ROVs by my review. I don't know.
I think you're correct in that.
I think they are too. Yeah.
Okay. So, based upon that, if the, what you're trying to allow, or what Pioneer would like for you to allow them to drive is, they're ROVs, I think.
And golf carts.
Okay. And, and golf carts, you can, you can authorize that via the ordinance you already have in place, you just need to have a resolution that specifies the roads in Pioneer where you're going to allow it. So, that's something that we can easily do, the golf carts. Now, for the ATVs, you know, we've got a blanket prohibition. The statute allows the ATV use on unpaved roads, speed limit less than thirty-five miles per hour, daytime use, certain age limit, but it's generally allowed, but we've opted out. And so, that's something you could rescind and make them allowed. But then, on ROVs, the statutes don't address it at all. I mean, other than they define them, and they describe them, and, but they're described, they're not, there's no special allowance for them in the law, like there is for ATVs and golf carts. So, I, I addressed the matter with an attorney who's on, with the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, and they're, you know, they're the agency that administers Chapter 316 and 317 and 390, all those, there's a series of chapters in a row that all deal with roadways and car titles and car tags, I said cars, motor vehicle for all those things. And so, I asked them, and so she spent a couple of weeks and looked into it and got back to me, and her, her basic answer was, no, ROVs are not allowed on public roadways. And I, you know, and her logic was, they're defined as off-highway vehicles by name. You know, they're, you go to the list, you go to the statute definitions, and it's got ROVs, and then it's got definitions of off-highway vehicles, and off-highway vehicles include ROVs. So, it's an off-highway vehicle, which is, it's not meant to be on the roads, you know, the public roads. So, that's her logic. You know, it's her opinion, but, you know, it's, it's an opinion that's of some value. So, so if you, you adopt this idea that the Pioneer residents have of some kind of licensing or registration program, where, you know, in order to have an, one of these vehicles, whether it's ATV, ROV, in order to operate them on the roads in Pioneer, you got to have a decal or a flag or whatever, well, that's just an additional layer of regulation, assuming we even can do it. But that doesn't authorize a use that's already prohibited by law. So, if the state law doesn't allow the ROVs, the fact that they've got a decal on it doesn't create an authorization, because state statute says you can't.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
But they, but they technically may be able to operate that on a gravel road, or a grass road or something. They can't offer, they can't operate it on a paved road?
Well, no. Okay. Well, we're talking about ROVs, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, for ROVs, it's, it's a public road, unspecified, including dirt, grass.
Okay.
As long as it's public.
Okay.
That's where they're not, that's where they're restricted. I mean, they can be on a private, well, I'm a little bit out of field here, because some of this is law enforcement, but I think they can operate on private roads. They cannot operate on a public road.
You can operate anything on a private road.
Yeah.
And we would not, we would not be able to, Mr. Chair, we would not be able to dictate or circumvent the state law.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to say, we wouldn't be able to take that map right there, and let's say the far left and the bottom half right here is the backside of Pioneer, and those are all the green grass roads or some of the moral roads, and we could just declare tonight, you can ride your, your ROVs on that, we would still be out of compliance with the state. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That's what I think we would, we would be authorizing something state law says they can't do. And so, we could impose an additional layer of regulation, maybe, and I have some doubts about that, but that wouldn't fix their problem, because it doesn't allow them to do what they want to do. That's a matter of state law.
Now, the person that's going to enforce said state law is either FWC or Henry County Sheriff's Department.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
So, where do they ride these things now?
Airware.
Evercore?
On the road. Do they have the other meeting, Commissioner?
No, we have not had another meeting, and I'm, after this discussion, I'm wanting to ask the board to allow for some resources to be given so that we can actually host two meetings. I want to host two meetings at Pioneer, community-specific, and I want to ask this board to also, I want a picture that big of Pioneer, so we can easily identify who said people are, and I want to, I want to get their opinion. I want to hear from the people that live there, because I don't, it's so, I can fill up a room of five hundred people right now and tell you, we all, we all want, you know, red vehicles, you know. Pick a subject, I could probably get five hundred people to come and talk to you about anything, you know, and it's not true. So.
So, one, one avenue that you do have available to get more certainty on whether the ROVs are allowed or not, because right now, whether ROVs are allowed or not, that's my opinion and this one attorney from Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle. It's, it's, we don't have a court decision that says this is the answer, and I don't have a statute that says ROVs may not be operated. I don't have that. I'm interpreting statutes. But you can ask for an opinion of the Attorney General. So, the Attorney General of Florida, one of her roles is to receive requests from local governments about statutory interpretation issues, and then they have a whole section of the office up there, and they, they research it and vet it, and goes through multiple levels and layers, and then they give you a written opinion that gives you some higher level of, it's the best, next best thing to a court decision. It's not law, but it's a stronger legal opinion, so.
Like, we should do that, and that we have got the ground to stand on or nothing.
It may help the grounds, but you still, at the end of the day, I don't see how they can say yes, because they don't have lights, they don't have stoplights, they don't have, I mean, they're not equipped, and most of them are not equipped.
It still goes, it still goes back to an enforcement issue.
And then, how are you going to enforce it anyway?
You know, and so, so for me, I mean, that's where I'm just, I'm wanting to hear from our community exactly, what, what is it that you entail as utopia, and then where there's potential middle ground, and then, I'm, I'm going to tell you, this is something, I mean, if the Pioneer community ultimately says, we want to be able to ride our ROV anywhere on a non-paved road, and we want to have two crossings across Henry Isles, and the state of Florida says we can't do that, I, I think you could take a map of Pioneer and go to talk to legislators and say, hey, Ben Albritton, you're from Hardy, look here, you know, why can't we let these people just ride over here? Well, the reason being is this, or the reason being is that. Yeah, but, you know, we, we need, we need to allow this to occur. And then, and then you, you tweak it a little bit. But maybe, if, if the Pioneer community overwhelmingly says, we don't want that, because what I'm hearing right now is, I want to be able to take my golf cart and ride to my neighbor.
Right.
And I want to be able to take my ROV and go see my neighbor as well. That's what we're hearing. But then, what you see is fifty people park at the Pioneer Community Center and set their hair on fire and go through the place. So, you know, where's, where's the reality and where is what we need to do?
Exactly right. That's, you, you're correct. We need to set those meetings up and.
Yeah.
Get the pressure and move forward.
And then, at the end of the day, it still gets back to, what can the sheriff actually enforce? And is FWC ever going to ride down Pioneer and actually write a ticket for something?
You got to catch them.
And it's not going to happen, you know? So, you know, where are we at?
They better do what they're doing now.
Some of the, some of the same issues that we have in some of the out, out, like Wheeler Estates. It sounds like a mini-army taking place out there every weekend, our shooting, and by the time the deputies get there, of course, everybody's gone.
Yeah.
They got to go all the way to Lehigh to get there.
Mr. Chair, have we identified Montour Street yet?
Uh, no.
We haven't identified this street yet?
Or.
For them, the golf carts for Montour.
They've not, they've not approached.
Not setting.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
So, do you want the Attorney General opinion, or you don't want, want to wait until after the Pioneer sessions?
So, Commissioner Turner, this is district.
I say we ask the Attorney, I say we ask the Attorney General's opinion regardless. I mean, it ain't going to, it's not going to hurt anything.
That'll take it pretty quick.
And so.
Probably won't get an answer through session anyway.
And so, I would recommend that we not just ask whether ROVs are allowed on public roads or not. I think we also ought to propose the idea of our licensing program, our registration program, what we're, what we're considering, because I think, I think that has a separate problem, you know, in the sense that, even if ROVs are allowed, and even if ATVs are allowed, which they are under certain circumstances, I question whether a licensing program is consistent with the statutes that basically say that title and tags are an issue of state law. So, but if you want, I, I can ask that question and give them all the different factors and arguments, and we can get answers to all these questions.
Those were quite adamant, they didn't want to do none of that.
But it's turning on a title or tag, though. I mean, it's sort of like a permit to ride in said area.
Yeah, but the question would be, what, what would we be, what would be we be evaluating? You know, we're, so they come in, they fill out a piece of paper.
Resident or non-resident. I think the whole point is, if you're a resident and non-resident, it's the only thing we're trying to.
Yeah. And so, we're not evaluating the vehicle in any way.
No, no, I think that we should. I think, I think you have to have, it's a multi-point thing. I mean, it's just like more, when I was a young, young boy, and the Henry County Hunt Area was open, and the guy that sat in the chair, Bo Pelham, you know, he was on that board, and they had to, they had to measure your tires. They had to, you know, they had to measure the height of the deck of your buggy. They had to, you know, there were, there were a multitude of things that they had to take into consideration, because prior to that, they let anybody go in, and a couple knuckleheads went through with their big wheels, and they just ran over fences, and they were going through everything, you know, and they would, a deer get up, and they'd run through the middle of the Palmetta's and all this stuff, and Alika said, you guys are destroying everything, so let's pull this back. So, then they, they found some middle ground, and I think, you know, unfortunately, we can't let a sleeping dog lie on this one anymore. I, I think that Pioneer was coexisting, but now you've had, you know, the economy's turned, a lot more people have bought toys, and you're seeing an influx of people from out of county that are out there, and I think it's, it's annoying some of the local residents, and then, and then they call the Sheriff's Department, and the Sheriff's Department comes out and they, they sting a couple of people, and it, and it hurts. So, I, you know, I think that's to be determined. I'd like to ask you all to reach out to, to your colleagues throughout. I want to say that I heard something about this in Charlotte County, but it may be Sarasota, but in one of their, and it wasn't a WMA, it wasn't a Wildlife Management Area, but they're, they're, you know, like, what does Marion County, do they have any involvement in what happens in Ocala National Forest, or is that all Division of Forestry? But can we find out? You know, how does Division of Forestry allow for ORVs to go through Ocala National Forest? Or Tate's, you know, Tate's, I can't remember what it's called, up in the, up in the Panhandle, but Cheryl Sanders from Franklin County, I remember her brother was a state legislator, and he was, he was part of them opening that up so that they could ride vehicles in there.
I think, you know. Well, there is.
There's one in Charlotte County.
There's, there's a chapter of the statutes, Chapter 261, Off-Highway Safety Vehicle and Recreation, and it's all about operating off-highway vehicles, including ROVs, on public lands, and it's, it's, so, it's not roadways, it's these conservation and public lands. They are allowed, and it's, and it's governed, and there's rules and regulations, and Department of Agriculture has an advisory committee, and they have rules that govern it. So, it is allowed on those kinds of facilities, but we're.
Some of them, some of them.
Some of them, yeah.
Designated trails.
Right.
Ours, ours is, you know, our, one that kicked us out all the time was Panther, you know, we were in, we were in a primary Panther habitat, so it removed us from that equation on, on all of our, you know, eighty thousand-plus land acres that we have, you know, but that's, that's something to be vetted again as well, I think.
Margaret, isn't one, isn't there one down on eighty-two?
Oh, you're talking about, um, um, lazy spring.
Yeah.
That's a private facility.
Are they still in?
That's, there's, yeah, they're still in operation, but there, there's going to be some changes there.
Okay.
The big cypress every year, you buy a hundred-dollar permit. You can only measure the width of your vehicle, length of your vehicle, width of your tires, and it's mandated on there. Tires must be X amount of inches, so, I mean, that's, that's all things, and Commissioner Turner is right on point there. Every, that comes into play.
And you get a sticker or something?
Every year.
Okay.
You get a sticker, you have to do it every year.
Then they come and inspect you.
Well, they inspect you that day. You get an inspection, you have to pass, you got to take a test to drive in the woods, then your vehicle has to pass inspection, inspection. That's the way it works, so.
That's good.
So, I would ask for authorization to, I, I know the Attorney General has a requirement that they, they just don't want requests coming in, you know, that are half, you know, not, not really serious. So, I think they require a vote of the commission to authorize the request for Attorney General opinion, so I'm asking for that, and if it requires a resolution, you authorize that too. I'll find out if it's necessary, but that you authorize it, and that, I ask all the relevant questions that need to be asked and not really be limited.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, to, to ask the county attorney to prepare for Attorney General opinion as it relates to off-highway vehicle usage, ATV, and, and all of the accoutrement.
Second motion.
Back, Commissioner Turner, second back, Commissioner Swindell.
Including the adoption of a resolution if necessary.
Yes.
Golf carts, everything, you know, let's put it all in there, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Attorney Blatt, how long do you expect that to take?
Well, I can probably put it together within, let's say, less than two weeks and submit it, and then.
Wait.
And then, I, I'm, on their website, I know they have like a page about this, and they have like.
Right.
Frequently asked questions, and I'm pretty sure they have a time frame on there.
Okay.
I haven't read it lately.
Well, and only because Commissioner Turner, that then may play into when you schedule the.
No, I think that, I think I need, I'm asking, I'm asking you all right now, can, can I ask the county engineer, can we have a picture that big of Pioneer, you know, that shows all of our residences, and if, and if, you know, I don't know, we ought to, I think we ought to slide LaDica in there, because that, that's not going to be, Pioneer could fit in there easily, and LaDica could definitely be in there. And then, what I'd like in that is, I'd like, you know, I'd like for it to be just that simple, so you could see, you know, where the moral roads are, you know, where the mid-brakes are, where everything's at, and that's not a crazy amount of money with the GIS program, especially if you make it four pictures and you just tape them together so that they match up on the seams, that's as easy as can be. And then, we tape it up on the wall there at Pioneer, and then I'm giving the green light to also advertise with county resources, county Facebook, you know, all of that, and then I'll probably buy the food, but, but I think we need to have a couple of all calls and have everybody come out there. I want to go through the roster, and I want to look at it, and I want to hear from the residents, because I don't, I don't care about John from Miami, or, you know, Ralph from Orlando, or Shamika from Cape Coral, if she wants to come out and ride her four wheeler. I really don't care what her opinion is, but I want to know if, what Fred Bosley and Curtis Green, and, you know, Mr. Fernando and all, I want to know what they're thinking, you know? And I'm going to put a heck of a lot of stock into what their thoughts are, and then I want to bring that back to you all and say, this is what we're thinking, you know? So.
Okay.
Y'all good with that?
I am, except for, except for there's no need to go through that exercise if we don't use it, you know? So, we can't, we, you know, I just want to make sure we merge both, you know. So, we can't, we, you know, I just want to make sure we merge both, you know.
Yes, sir.
Exactly what you're saying with, you know, uh, some sort of rendering from the state's attorneys. I don't want to leave one left.
Well, I think we'll be moving down a parallel track, Commissioner, and then, and then, you know, ultimately, if the state says no, then we can tweak what our, what our outcome is to match up with that, while at the same time, then, then going down another path to say, hey, we want to work with you all now.
Okay. Trying to get out of buying dinner.
Yes, we did. Okay, business by district?
Um, two, two, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, we had a, a very pleasant trip, pleasantly surprised at how phenomenal the trip we had to Tallahassee, meet with legislators. Uh, Ms. Hunter, Commissioner Turner, myself went, and, um, uh, at, at, you know, out of all the years I've been on the board, it was the, the best trip we had, it was the best interaction we had, um, ended up with good news, it's already been announced here tonight, and, uh, we know that we're working on others, and, um, our lobbyist, uh, Gray Robbins and the staff there, they just, uh, very pleasant, very pleased to say that they're working very hard for us, and it's evident, and, uh, and I was glad to be a part of it. I can't say that it's always gone that way, so I, I was very, very excited to, to come back from that trip the way that we did. The Swamp Cabbage, uh, LaBelle Youth Livestock, I think, is going on this week, I believe, tonight, tomorrow night, and throughout the week. Uh, Henry County Fair livestock shows are this week, so, um, encourage everyone in the audience and watching on Facebook to participate and, you know, come watch and, and enjoy, uh, the hard work, you know, and support our youth in every way possible. So, look forward to that, look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Ms. Bird?
You know, it's because we went up before you went up, right?
What's that?
It's because we went up there before you went to Tallahassee.
Well, hey, whatever, whatever y'all did, it worked, keep doing it.
I just, I had to throw that in there, you know? But, um, I, first of all, I'd like to just thank everyone for coming out to the meeting and thank the board for the decision that was made tonight. Also, I just need to clean up a couple of things. Um, I wish everybody had, would have stayed, but, um, Alan Bolin chose people to clean, and I don't think he had no complaints of the people that he used to clean, and I just need to make sure I clarify that, that those workers go in and clean and clean behind people, and I think they do a good job. He have not had any complaints of that, so I don't, I don't want our workers to feel as if, um, we're throwing dirt on their work, because they work hard for us. They don't do the twenty-nine hours, but them are hard twenty-nine hours, so I want them to know that I appreciate it. If you have a problem in the community, and if you don't address us, we don't know everything, we don't see everything, it take people saying, hey, did you know that tree fell down behind the house? Sometimes we don't know. So, then, you, you take it straight to the top, and it could have been handled on the bottom floor. You know, sometimes we have to address things by bringing it to someone, so, but, other